Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Harding is absent. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for remarks on the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Johnson.
Good afternoon. Have a seat. Thank you for coming. Just going to remind everyone to turn their phones to silence, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As a young girl when I grew up, I remember saying this pledge over and over and over again. It was a staple in my community. It meant something to my community. What it meant was that we had a responsibility as a community to work together as a team. That what impacted my household impacted my neighbor's households. Again, this United States of America pledge that we hold so true and so dear to our hearts. We say these things over and over and over and over again. And yet, on May 14th, in Buffalo, New York, an 18-year-old white man allegedly acted out a mass shooting with the intent to kill and destroy people of color. Yet, as a society, we say this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I repeat that over and over again because that's what we say as a nation. We say this in sporting events. We say this when we began this meeting today. And yet, we continue to see countless acts of violence throughout our nations, all on the premise of destroying a race of people. I'm going to let that resonate with all of you in this room. And then I'm going to challenge you as a citizen. What is your responsibility to ensure that justice is given for all? What is your role in your decisions that you make every day? When you walk out the door, you make decisions. You see things about other people and decisions that are made daily. Do they have fair and justice written all over them when those decisions are made? Do we speak up for that? I ask you this question because if we truly want to change the climate of what happened on May 14th, where we had an act of violence that took place in Buffalo, New York, all because we wanted to get rid of people of color. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for those remarks. I think it is important. We acknowledge that here today. The unspeakable hate crime that did happen in Buffalo, New York, and with President Biden there today, with the families and with those communities. Our thoughts and prayers go out to that community as well and also those families. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate you being here and look forward to your testimony on our many items. As Councilmember Johnson noted, please turn your cell phones to vibrate or preferably off, and we'll go from there. First item.
Item six, a resolution to approve the Community Innovation Campus Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1127 North 20th Street in amount up to $385,000.
Item number six does have a public hearing and vote today that's been advertised, but we've had a request by the applicant to lay over until June 28th. So I believe that's the intention of the city council today. But it having been advertised, I will give that opportunity, even though we encourage folks to wait to weigh in until it's actually being considered. Having said that, I'll ask for proponents on number six, if there are any. Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, I will not close the public hearing. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
I move that we lay this over for the request of the applicant.
And continue public hearing, right?
And continue public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Abstain.
Motion passed five to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
We will remove number 10 from the consent agenda. So we'll start with the public hearing on agenda items number seven through nine, which were held on May 10th. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 10, an ordinance to approve the redevelopment agreement for Mutual of Omaha, generally located at 215 South 15th Street, and additional property generally located between 13th and 14th Streets and Farnham and Harney Streets in amount up to $68,614,696.
Thank you. The public hearing was already held on this item, but I did want Mr. Anderson just to come to the podium if he could from the mayor's office for a few things I want to confirm from last week, and then we'll see if other council members also have any remarks or lights they'd like to have on this item.
Good afternoon. Kevin Anderson, Mayor's Office.
Obviously, what we have before us is a major economic development project in our city. $600 million worth of private investment in the urban core and 4,000 jobs downtown. So a very significant development we're considering here today. As we heard last week, there were some concerns about the process and how we got here to this point, but I think mostly around the original announcements of the library site. And frankly, I think those criticisms were justified, and we've all had a lot to say about that several months ago. But what we're talking about today is a rather complex or a very complex redevelopment agreement, I would say, pertaining to the Mutual of Omaha Tower. And I want to note the city council has been working on this for several months and spent the time last week to allow public commentary, unlimited timeframes for public commentary here, since that opportunity wasn't previously afforded to the general public. So I wanted to note that and also note all the details we've been requesting and the financial analysis we've requested on this item over that timeframe and that we discussed last week in great detail. The vote being today, I just wanted to confirm a few things that I think, you know, were part of our conversation last week, but we talked about a lot of things. So I wanted to make sure these details were transparent and public before we all make our decision about this today. And the first one on my list is that conceived of in this redevelopment agreement, the city would then demolish the library on the current library site. It does not, in fact, do that, though. That would be a separate contract and a separate amount of funding that's yet to be determined and still must come to the council at some future date, right?
Correct.
The second item we discussed was the purchase of the Mutual Omaha Garage at $45,000 per stall. And, you know, the question was, why was that of interest to the city? And I think that answer is because that parking garage also will provide public parking to the $300 million new park that will be opening and celebrating on July 1st and 2nd here in the community. But also, those stalls are leased back to Mutual of Omaha employees that then fund that operation and the debt on that operation. And presumably, it could also still fund portions of the streetcar should it be built. Is that accurate to say?
Yes, that's correct.
And that source of funds is lease purchase bonds, right?
Correct.
Related to that, there were some questions about what's conceived of in this document but doesn't actually happen in this document, which is the purchase of the current Mutual of Omaha garages at the Midtown Crossing location. That's conceived of, and the city believes that's in our interest because should the streetcar move forward, that's also an opportunity to fund those operations on an annual basis, right?
Yes, as well as support the redevelopment of the current Mutual of Omaha real estate assets and holdings. Correct.
And that is not executed in this document. That would be a future consideration. A to-be-determined source of funding that must also be approved by the city council at some point, right?
Yes, that's correct. It's anticipated that, again, a large portion of that comes from those lease purchase bonds supported by the Parking Enterprise Funds. But as noted last week, we can also utilize the proceeds of transactions associated with this redevelopment to offset some of those with the purchase of real estate as well.
And I've had some emails since from some folks that live in that area, you know, asking about, well, if that happens, will they still have the same things they like about those garages guaranteed to them, such as security and maintenance and all those things? But the proper time to ask those questions and really deal with that would be, if in fact, that comes back to us at a future date, right?
Correct. But yeah, I'd encourage them to keep in mind that in doing so and putting it, putting those structures out to public use, it becomes much more of a, you know, 24-hour use for, you know, office use, entertainment use, residential use, rather than solely dedicated, which some of those stalls currently are, just towards the office use of Mutual of Omaha.
Thank you. Last week, we also talked about what is executed in this agreement, which would be Mutual of Omaha's ability to purchase the site just to the east of what would be the Mutual of Omaha Tower at market value. And at that time, the property was still being appraised, but I did request we have that information available to us today, prior to voting. And I did just come today. So I just wanted to confirm on the record that that appraisal at market value then is $8,620,000. $8,620,000. Is that true?
That's correct. I just want to kind of add and remind that both parties are still going through that appraisal process to, you know, verify some of the assumptions put into that. But yeah, that's correct. That's the preliminary appraisal report that came out of that process.
And that's not being given to Mutual. That's being purchased by them.
Correct.
And should the tower not move forward for some reason, they do not just get that property, would not be executed?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Should the tower, for some reason, not move forward, they would not still have the right to purchase that property, right?
Correct. Yeah, it's all tied together.
I think that's important to note, too. And then the two other pieces of real estate, primary pieces of real estate that are involved in this agreement today are the old U of Pacific site, is what I call it, and then the library site itself. And it's not a land swap, but there is an exchange of property. And so I think it's important to know those numbers, too. The library site, I believe, has been appraised now at $7,870,000.
That's correct.
And the UP site is yet to be appraised or is in that process, but we estimated last week it's about $6 million.
Yeah, given the, recognizing that it is a bit of a smaller site and at a separate location, we expect that to be about $6, $6.5 million based off of the per square foot of the two appraisals we do have in hand.
And all those, you know, technically separate from this deal, the reason the city believes that's in its interest is because of future development opportunities. And then we would control that site, control its maintenance for now, but then presumably also what could develop there in the future.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree. That's important. That's a major block downtown as well. Last two things for me. Turner Park, there's also some emails I got in the last week, given our discussion last week, about the responsibility for the maintenance of that park, which currently is the responsibility of Midtown Crossing. And in that respect, has been enhanced, I think, over that period of time to make sure it looks good. And I think also helps fund some of their events they do there for the city. What's conceived of in this agreement is that that responsibility then goes back to the city, not Midtown Crossing no longer or not Mutual no longer. And as we discussed last week, we think that's about a $700,000 proposition. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's the current expenditures. Just again, to remind the council, being that would be now a city-owned process that would be put out to publicly bid process, which a good can bring that price higher or lower. Correct.
And with the city taking on that responsibility, it's also accurate to say that would not be detrimental to the current parks project or any other park in the city. It would be up and above that responsibility, right?
That's correct. Yeah, it would be a higher level of maintenance and operation that what is currently contemplated for, you know, quote, standard of service relating to parks. So it's my anticipation that we will look towards the corresponding redevelopment of that area as the funding source to cover that increase in maintenance and operation costs.
So no anticipated impact to the general fund?
Correct.
I think that's good as well. And some residents also expressed interest in that item because they want to make sure the park stays as well-maintained as it has been, and I think it should also do that.
Absolutely. It's a great asset for the city and for that area.
But even so, that arrangement, should it come to pass, is most likely 2026, so several years from now.
Correct, yes.
Thanks. I think that's the last question I have for you. And I would just say, the other thing this document does do, of course, is it does say the city will proceed in good faith on a streetcar and pursue that project as well. This document, though, does not execute that either. There's still several more opportunities for us to discuss that, several more public hearings on that. And we've requested a lot more information on it and its financial impact that I think is still a work in progress. In fact, I would say it's been a little frustrating to get those details in the last couple of months, but I think that is getting better, even just in the last week or two. But we'll need a lot more detail on that, I think, before we're comfortable voting on that project. But I just wanted to make it clear that's still a work in project in process, too, that the city council is being deliberate about and is not actually considering here today. And in fact, have hired a company called Munichap to do a lot of that analysis for us that we're all eagerly awaiting. With that, Ms. Johnson, your light's on.
Thank you, Mr. President, for fleshing out all of the intricate parts of this agreement and also this motion or this ordinance that we're about to vote on today. This project is unique and it is very impactful to the entire city of Omaha, Nebraska. The impact of economic growth and development and opportunity for jobs is incredible and much to talk about for years to come. I can go on and on and on about Mutual and its ability to provide a good quality opportunity for job growth and all of those things. I can go on and on and on. But I think everyone in this room kind of knows what Mutual is. They have, you know, they've been around forever. We have their marketing campaign regarding their ability to entice us with the notion of animals and things like that, which they're noted for. It's been around for decades. So, I mean, there's no question about their impact in Omaha and what they will do in the coming years to come. So I would go ahead and move that we accept this. I motion to approve the ordinance.
Second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Okay, I'd like to submit this to the council, and then I'll leave.
Because you are out of order. You may give it to the clerk, and then you're welcome to leave.
It's right there. Your own rule is right there.
You're welcome to leave. Thank you. The public hearings on agenda items numbers 11 through 18 and 22, 23 and 25 through 29 are today. And I say those numbers because we have taken numbers 19, 24 and 30 off consent agenda, and we'll do those next. So we'll start with items 11 through 18, 20 through 23 and 25 through 29. If you wish to address those, these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing on those items is closed. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve amendment number one to the Professional Services Agreement with Snyder &amp; Associates, Inc., in the amount of $110,500 for the Giles Road Siphon Replacement is amendment of the whole requested by the Public Works Department.
Thank you. This agenda item was taken off consent because there is amendment of the whole, but we will have a public hearing now on this item. So I'll take proponents on number 19. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call. Amendment of the whole, right? Same second? Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 24, a resolution to approve the nomination of Luella Isom Way as a commemorative street name on 43rd Street from Bedford Avenue to Emmett Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 24 is today. We wanted to take this off consent agenda in case there are any representatives or family members of Luella Isom who'd like to speak here today. And I think Councilmember Johnson may have some comments, too. So we'll take proponents, please. Please come down.
Hi. My name is Karen Isom, and I'm doing this for my mom, Luella Isom. And she's just an awesome lady, and she's a cook, and she feeds everybody in the neighborhood and across the hall. So I just want to thank y'all for letting me come up and honor my mom today.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, too. We do need your address, too, just for the record.
3312 North 43rd Street.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
And could you repeat your name, too, just for her notes?
My name is Karen Isom.
Great. Thanks. And thanks for that background, your mom. That's amazing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Oh, second. And then should I go ahead and make comments?
Yeah, would you like your light on? Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
All right. I'm going to help out my colleague, Mr. Bagley, and second the motion to approve this designation of, street designation for Luella Isom Way. Ms. Isom dedicated over 50 years of her life to the North Omaha community, impacting numerous lives along the way. Isom moved to Omaha from Oxford, Mississippi in 1958, where she began working for a catering business on 24th and Decatur. Luella demonstrated excellence in community service through volunteering with the outreach program at her local church, United Methodist, where she also served as a committee chair of over 50 years. She was also a foster grandparent for the Eastern Nebraska Office of Aging and worked at both King Elementary School as well as the University Hospital in the cafeteria. Isom unfortunately passed away in January of 2016. This commemorative designation would honor Luella on 43rd Street from Bedford Avenue to Emmett Street. What an awesome responsibility to the community that she played in numerous lives, also in the community. And it is just incredible that we're having this opportunity to display that type of community obligation and commitment to service or to serve others. Thank you.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 30, a resolution to approve the appointment of Camilla Watkins as a commissioner of the Omaha Housing Authority to serve a term from May 18th, 2022, and expiring May 17th, 2027.
Public hearing and vote on number 30 is today. I'll take proponents first. And now we have Ms. Watkins by Zoom, too, so we'll give her an opportunity here in a minute. Mr. Levy, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, here today, wearing my hat as president of the Board of Commissioners of the Omaha Housing Authority, fully in support of the appointment of Ms. Watkins to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. I think she would be a great agenda or a great addition. Among other things, her experience in and with the nonprofit sector in the city of Omaha would help us continue to build partnerships with that sector, which we've done a lot of over the last five years or so. And I think that's really benefited the Housing Authority and our residents. So strongly urge your confirmation of Ms. Watkins' appointment. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Cheryl Weston, 1811 Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68110. I could only ditto what Mr. Levy has just said about Ms. Watkins. I've known her for years. She's an outstanding young lady. And I agree that anything that she's going to be committed to, she is going to be participating in, she will be committed to. And she has that ability about her to bring people together and try to find a positive outcome. So I think they couldn't have chosen a better person to be on the Omaha Housing Authority Board. And hopefully, and I do believe you will all vote for her for this. I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents in the audience today? Seeing none, we'll recognize Ms. Watkins herself. Get you off mute here in a second. Presuming you're also a proponent. Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Camille Watkins. I'm here. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Great. Thank you. We'll now move to opponents. Any opponents today?
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerns, Citizen Foundation. I think Ms. Kimberly would be okay, but I have some problems here with Omaha Housing Authority. As I was going up to Blair a few years back, trying to help the Blair County Commissioner turn some land over to Douglas County, as I was driving at Blair, I noticed some of the residents there has property, and they got cestners in their backyard. I said, when did you folks start living like the Jets and not telling us? So all this money is going in that direction. Omaha Housing Authority has had a lot of problems, but she may be able to straighten some of them out. As I, Mayor Fay, he did get the land, but I didn't ask the Blair County Commissioner for land for the city. I asked him for land for us to start growing medical marijuana, and they said, we'll think about it. But in the meantime, when they do pass it in November, and Governor Rickett will stop all these sessions for, what was it? He called a session for the death penalty. Now he's calling one for abortion, which is fine if that's what the Unicam wants to do. But can he call a session to say, look, we can provide a job to North Omaha, but he won't do that? So Governor Rickett, I think, is a nice man, but let's look at this housing authority program. It's not working in the term it is doing now. So if she willing to listen to some of the complaints from North Omaha, we'll provide some with her, to her. But I think she'd be a good candidate. In the meantime, we'll have someone we can complain to because right now, always getting this phone. And then when you call the phone back, you can't go through the phone to hit nobody inside the head and say, why are you giving this stupid answer? But don't do that. That's against the law.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks.
Mr. President. Ms. Watkins, can you hear me?
I, I think by that head shake she can.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thanks for zooming in today. I know you had a pre-scheduled event from many months ago. And in our conversation we had on Sunday, I appreciate you calling me back. We had a real nice conversation. And if you don't mind sharing a little bit of what you and I talked about, which was, tell us the, when you grew up, you were a, you were a child of Omaha Housing Authority with your single mother, correct?
Correct.
And can you tell us what that meant to you in the stability of your family, that your mother and you, your family was, grew up in Omaha Housing Authority and what that meant to the stability of your family?
Yeah, absolutely. So after my parents divorced, we moved here and my mother, being a single mother, she working, working in the U.S. Attorney's Office. We didn't quite qualify for any other housing assistance other than Omaha Housing Authority. And so I had the opportunity to grow up in Omaha Housing, scattered site housing in the eighties and nineties here. And it wasn't until we were approved for that program that we actually had consistency and stability. Every year up until then, we had moved each year and I was in a different school. And so having the ability to have a place to just call home and have that stability to then further my education, to actually finally be seen and have a chance to grow and learn in one place with a consistent school district where I could start to call a place home. That's what locked in Omaha as a place for me to be in, but it also helped me to lock into the work that I'm wanting, that I do today at nonprofit for the city.
I, I appreciate you sharing that, because in looking at your resume with where you're at today, Don, I think you're in Lincoln, right?
I am in Lincoln today for a workshop.
Conference in Lincoln with inclusive communities and your work for Habitat for Humanity of Omaha, amongst other groups. I think the story that you shared with me, that you were gracious enough to share with everybody here today, really makes it an easy vote, in my view, for you being placed on the OHA Board because of your credibility growing up and understanding what it meant to your family and the lives you can touch as a commissioner on the Omaha Housing Authority Board. I think that's a much-needed voice and body that, that is needed over there. So I will be glad and be happy to make the, the motion to support your nomination that Mayor Stotter placed before us here today. I, I wanted to just ask you on your resume, you had had the John Muir Local for your experience. Can you briefly just describe what that meant? And I'm assuming it says you were a union president and negotiator and a member. So explain to us what that process was and what that meant to you and how many members you had.
So John Muir Local was the local union for the Sierra Club employees, which has over 500 staff across the country, as well as, and there was a separate union for the California District, which was another close to like 300 staff. So I joined that union when I started as an employee there in 2004. And then two years later, time is relative, I became the president of the union, which was right during the time of our contract negotiations, just before the recession in 2008. So I, I would say that was probably one of the most pivotal moments in my life, because as a 26-year-old, having to speak in front of management and negotiate for fair wages right in the time of a depression, but also really learning what it looks like to understand the differences between a union member and management. And having been in management now, it gave me that perspective that there's still space and room and opportunities to talk to people and work out and figure out what are the needs, that we all have different needs, and it's about finding what's the common ground and still honoring the dignity that people need to have as employees as the greatest asset of an organization.
I, I appreciate your answer on that, and that's important. As somebody that spent most of my life in the labor movement, as a son of a mailman and a school teacher, I, I really am refreshed by that perspective that you bring to the table, that you've had in your life experience with collective bargaining and understanding you represent members with important wages, benefits, safety of those employees that are represented by the union. So I don't have any other questions, but I wanted to say thank you again for taking the time to talk to me on Sunday. And it really was refreshing, and I'm really proud to support you with the breadth, the background that you'll bring to this position. And if there's ever anything I can do to help you when you're over there, assuming that my colleagues support my motion, I'll be glad to do that at any time. Thank you.
There was a motion, there was a motion to approve, which I will second. And then Ms. Johnson, your light's on.
Oh, I just wanted to echo my colleague's statement regarding Ms. Watkins' abilities that obviously she has demonstrated through her current role in inclusion, inclusive communities. We all know that the Omaha Housing Authority currently has some huge challenges. And I believe that she will bring some clarity and some perspective there. And also, she will be able to reach out to the individuals there in the Omaha Housing that we serve as a community. I think that she does have that ability to, to make a difference. And of course, I will be in support of this, not only for that reason, but also the makeup of the board. Again, I believe we do need to begin looking at having a diverse committees. And she brings that forth today, and so I'm in complete support of this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I had a couple of questions for Ms. Poor or your group, if you could, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just a couple of questions that I was reading in between the phone call that Kami and I had on Sunday.
Sure.
So that, just describe, what's the budget of OHA right now?
Oh my goodness, our budget.
And Joni, just your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Joni Poor, 1823 Harney Street, Omaha Housing Authority. Our annual budget is well above 70 million.
Okay. And how many employees with OHA?
Over 180.
Okay. And how many families and housing units, can you just kind of briefly, for people listening out there, so they understand what OHA does and the importance, obviously, the organization you have.
Sure, absolutely. Our organization is, we are a public housing authority. So we contract with Housing and Urban Development to deliver public housing as well as voucher housing. We have, we own and operate over 2,700 public housing units in the city of Omaha. We have those through 11 tower locations, two large multifamily sites, one of which soon is to be redeveloped, Spencer Homes along North 30th Street. The other very large multifamily site is Southside Terrace. And then also we have nearly a little less than 600 scattered site homes throughout the community, as well as a number of small town homes or other apartment complexes throughout town to equal that 2,700 public housing units. And then we also administer over 5,000 vouchers. Some of those are housing choice vouchers, more commonly known as Section 8 vouchers. And others are different types of vouchers, but work similarly. Maybe they are attached to a site or a specific program, but again, are a voucher program.
Okay. And out of the number of employees you had, I know it was well reported in the news. And I had attended the meeting in December when there were some bumps in the road with some representative members of Local 251.
Yes.
And I believe, in, in fact, that day in December, the 10th, I believe it was, I attended that meeting with Mr. Burke Halter, the local president of 251, former Senator Chambers and Senator McKinney, amongst many of the members that were impacted by that. So we all spoke in support of the workers, and I know there was 18 people impacted by that. How many, are they, are any of them back, or what is the status of those 18 employees?
Sure. You're, for the benefit perhaps of the rest of the council, you're referencing that in December of 2021, we made a difficult decision that we were restructuring our utility worker position. We had actually made the decision in August and were in negotiations with Local 251. And sparing all of the details, we were not able to reach agreement that worked both for our operations and that was agreed upon by the Local 251. So we did choose to, as an organization, make an operational change and eliminated 18 utility worker positions within our organization at that time. And so those individuals received that notification on December 10th. And then they were paid out through the remainder of 2021. As of this time, I believe we have four of those employees working back in different positions within the, the organization. We did follow up with all 18 individuals and we offered all 18 individuals job search placement with an outside company. We offered those resume building or resume writing, excuse me, and job search services with an outside company. We also reached out to them internally with Sal Asaka, our longtime resident services and ten, service coordinator within our organization, who does a lot of our partnerships in the community with different employers. So Sal partnered with our HR, our HR director, Latina Jackson, and contacted between the two of them, all 18 employees, and offered assistance separately, just within our organization for any assistance in job searching, because we had a number of other entities reach out to us to offer positions. We had Millard Public Schools reach out, we had the City of Omaha reach out with a variety of different positions that were open within the community that might be a same skill set fit for those employees and to try to make matches so that while there was that elimination within our organization, there was an opportunity for them to have employment within a different position in the community. Several of those employees, a handful of them said, no, thank you. We, we're doing just fine on our housing search on our own. But several of them did accept the assistance that was offered. And then several of them did apply for positions within our, the authority and have been hired back.
Is that outside of OHA?
Is what outside of OHA?
Those positions that they were trying to get, were they within OHA or outside it?
Some of them were within and then some of them were without.
Were more outside it or more within it? Both? That's fine.
So we provided, so we provided, and I can provide to you if you'd like to, I didn't bring it today, because I didn't know that you'd be asking this of me today.
I don't know where you are, but these are HR, potential HR employee issues that I'm really uncomfortable discussing. I just want to say.
That's okay, but I think it's Mr. Bagley's floor. You can have your light on if you wish, just to maintain our process here.
And that's why I said if you can't answer it, that's okay, as I was, if I can continue.
So we are, you know, we're a public entity and we try to be as transparent as possible. And I'll try to answer as openly as I possibly can the, the questions that you have. We provided the employees with a list of, of a variety of different positions, both positions that we had internally and then externally as well.
Okay. And, and the point, I guess, that I was, I was going to get to on that was that if they do leave their position from the layoff, I understand that's, that's protocol that you try to help people with skill sets, men and women, get a job somewhere else. But we're talking about employees that had been there 10, 20 or 30 years, is my understanding from the news reports and the meeting that I went to there. And the reason I'm asking you these things, and I appreciate that we had a conversation in the mayor's office last week.
Yes.
That these boards that Ms. Watkins is being nominated for today, that I am glad to support. I want people to understand what the importance of your budget, the number of employees you have. And some people like to throw around the term unelected bureaucrats. There are seven commissioners with Ms. Watkins, if this happens today, that, again, I call them public servants, because they're overseeing a tremendous organization that's had their challenges and that are making the effort to try to help people. I think there's, there's four of these complexes in my district that help the dignity of people that are trying to get through life. And the commissioners on the OHA Board, it's, in my view, you know, what happened in December, there was cost savings. I'll just make the comment, I believe it's about prioritizing. Budgets are priorities. And more importantly than budgets are people, the dignity of the workers that are represented. And it's unfortunate what happened there back in December. My hope is that with Ms. Watkins and the others on the board, that the dignity of the workers will be represented and heard instead of prioritizing budgets and eliminate people and possibly the services that aren't as good for the people you're supposed to be serving. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 31, an ordinance approving amendment number four to extend a contract by two years with Passport Labs, Inc. for the on-street parking management system in an estimated amount of $76,340 annually.
Public hearing on number 31 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 32, an ordinance to approve the CIP at Saddle Creek Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 32 is today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 32? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie Johnson, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, the Johnson and Question Foundation. I, I, I keep seeing these tax increment going into Saddle Creek, but we don't have any tax programs going into North Omaha. It's concerning me, because we have a lot of problems there that the city council seems to not be bringing up week after week. And I, I think, I love New York, Omaha. I grew up with Marlin Perkins. But I still have to come back to when I was going up to Blair, they said, what do we need land for? But Mayor Fay, he got the land, but we was trying to get this done years back. So we need to refocus on some of the problems we're having in North Omaha, still there, all this growth. Growth is good, but at the same time, we're falling way behind. As I said, I seen people with Cessna planes in their backyard when I was going up to Blair. And they said, well, Johnson, why do you want us to sell your land in Douglas County? I said, because you folks over here in Washington County acting just like those folks in Washington, D.C., but we're going to get a fair hearing in Douglas County. So sell out some land, we'll stay in Douglas County.
Thank you. Any other opponents today on number 32?
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Rushlaw, 1010 South 49th Avenue. I'm speaking today on behalf of my father, who could not be here. My father and all the other fathers in the neighborhood worked so hard and dedicated their livelihoods to ensuring that our neighborhood was safe for everyone to play in for, for 50, 60 years. And now we're doing it for our own children. Just because this negatively affects only four or five neighbors directly in our neighborhood, that doesn't mean our opinions shouldn't matter, because they do. Just like all of your neighborhoods matter, to each and every one of you, ours matter to us. A lot. I'm going to skip over some of these. We've asked several times about a drop-off from our property between the apartment complex. And we've asked what they're going to do about it, because it's a 25 to 30-foot drop-off. Mr. Jobin says, and he tells you that it's eight to 10 feet. We're up on our yard looking over the tops of these buildings that they're going to be tearing down. So maybe it's even more than that. Maybe it's more than 25 to 30 feet. So my question is to Mr. Jobin and the developers, when, when will this be addressed? That really would be my question, is when will this be addressed? This has been going on for a couple of years, at the least, and we still don't have an answer. We've asked why mature evergreen trees on their property, standing between ours and theirs, that are 30 to 40 feet tall, can't be a border between both of those properties? Their answer is, they're all coming down. When we put our house and garage on our property, we were told that we need to keep as many mature trees as possible on our acre and a half. And so we did, but that's because we wanted to. But that's what they told us, that we had to do that. So we saved as many as we possibly could. so we saved as many as we possibly could. There are no trees that they can plant that will replace these mature trees. They're right along the property line. I don't see how these trees cannot be saved. There's seven, eight of them that are huge, and yet we're just gonna go in there and tear them all down, just like the houses that they bought, tearing down. We all need affordable housing, but we're gonna tear all those down. I guess if they really want to make this building fit into our neighborhood like they say they do, maybe they would have asked for our input from the very beginning. And there are no new floodplains that can convince anyone, them especially, that Saddle Creek floods, because according to them, it doesn't. But we all know different, we all saw it. But they don't care because the only parking garages, there's only parking garages below, and they don't care about that, but because insurance companies will pay for that, for the damage, and so will we in the long run in our premiums, every one of us. Every car that floods down there, there's still cars sitting down by Hy-Vee, and the apartments are boarded up down there from the flood before, last year. And there's only one other thing I want to say, is that on behalf of my neighbors on Forty-Ninth Street and us on Forty-Ninth Ave., is that I don't want Mr. Jobin to forget that in front of God and everyone here, he told us that there will be no work trucks entering from any of our streets. Everything will be coming from Saddle Creek. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents today on number thirty-two? Seeing none, public hearings closed. No lights? Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Yeah, I think Mr. Jobin might want to have a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Members of the, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen, forty, Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and the developer. I guess all I would point out is we've had the land use discussion a number of times before the planning board as well as this council. We will have it again with the final plat when it comes back to this council as well with the planned unit redevelopment portion of the development as well as the zoning and plating. This, what's before you today is the redevelopment agreement, which is an agreement that memorializes the redevelopment plan that was approved by this council a few weeks ago. So this agreement that's in front of you today just takes what was approved previously in the redevelopment plan and memorializes it into an agreement with respect to the amount of the tax increment financing that is granted to this particular project based upon what's being proposed. So there's more discussion to be had, and actually, we're planning another neighborhood meeting with the neighbors to discuss trees and some of the other issues between now and when this comes back to the, to this council on the final rezoning, final plat, and the PUR. So this is just another step in the process, and so that's all I wanted to add, and I'm here for questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now for the lights. Next item.
Item thirty-three, an ordinance to enter into a purchase agreement with McQueen Equipment, LLC to purchase eleven emergency vehicles and seven med units at a total cost of ten million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents.
Public hearing on number thirty-three is today. Proponents, please. Welcome, chief.
Good afternoon, Daniel Olson, Fire Chief, Omaha Fire Department, fifteen sixteen Jackson Street. Mr. President and respected council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak as a proponent to item number thirty-three. As you know, item thirty-three is an ordinance that authorizes the Omaha Fire Department to purchase eleven fire apparatus and seven medic units at a cost of just over ten point nine million dollars. OFD will contract with McQueen Equipment, LLC, which is a vendor currently stationed in Lincoln, Nebraska, and as you are aware, McQueen has pledged to move to Omaha and will provide excellent support to OFD's fleet. The apparatus will be purchased through the state of Nebraska's NASPO Value Point Fire Apparatus Master Agreement, and the seven medic units will be purchased through a sole source spinner agreement. As you've been briefed, the term of this agreement is three years, runs from 2022 through 2024, and includes the option to purchase additional apparatus through 2029 at the consortium pricing points with a zero percent raise above selected consortium pricing. To speak in finer detail, the eight-year apparatus replacement plan achieves a number of goals, most importantly, raising the bar in terms of enhancing public safety in our community while also creating layers of efficiencies in all things fleet. By passing this ordinance, you will be supporting the standardization of Omaha's fleet, a step that is most certainly precedent-setting. Your support of this ordinance will, without a doubt, enhance service delivery and promote firefighter safety through familiarity of apparatus and understanding the nuances of the fleet. It will reduce auto-service times for apparatus that are in for repairs by enhancing efficiencies related to repairs and maintenance. It will also allow the department to replace apparatus at the eight-year point, which, where we know in the fire service industry, repair and maintenance costs dramatically increase while apparatus values significantly decrease. Your support of this ordinance will allow us to front-load three years of purchases so that we can capitalize on current pricing points and work to maneuver on production delivery delays that we know are standard in the industry today. The five fire engines, four aerial trucks, seven medic units, one combination pumper, and one heavy rescue hazmat unit will be strategically placed within our fire stations, and you can be assured that they will be placed to serve each of your city council districts. The apparatus also complement the six new medic units that we just received within the last month, and it will also complement three engines that are currently on order, three Pierce Fire Engines that are currently on order, and two Pierce Fire Towers that are being produced at the factory as I speak here today. I'm grateful to report that this ordinance does have full support of Mayor Stothard, her chief of staff, and cabinet team. We also have pledged support from our finance director, his team, the Public Works team, which includes our fleet maintenance personnel, and I'm also very pleased to report that we have full pledge of support from Local Three Eighty-Five's President Trevor Towey, who speaks on behalf of the Omaha Professional Firefighters Labor Group. Council members, I hope you understand that we appreciate your continued and longstanding support of the Omaha Fire Department. In terms of support of this ordinance, together with Mayor Stothard, our partners in city government, and our labor team, we will no doubt raise the bar and enhance public safety. With that said, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. We also have representatives from our Technical Services Division, who carried, did a lot of the heavy lifting on this project, and representatives from McQueen, LLC, in the audience as well. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Mr. Towey, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Trevor Towey, six zero zero five Grover Street. I'm the president of the Omaha Professional Firefighters, and I want to thank you, Mr. President, and the rest of the council members for allowing me to speak as a proponent of this ordinance today. I've been an Omaha firefighter for twenty-three years, and the one thing that I know is that our top priority is always public safety, always has, always will be. Our focus is often, how can we provide high-quality fire and EMS service to the citizens that we protect, given the resources that we've been allowed to use? The things that I know is that first, we have to have an appropriate amount of well-trained firefighters and paramedics that are capable of responding to any emergency that we have in the city. But we also must have safe and reliable fire trucks and ambulances capable of providing that response. This plan, I think, is a very good first step in providing the resources to your firefighters and my members that can complete that mission and keep Omaha safe. I support the chief. He assembled a very good team that spent a lot of time, energy, effort, to develop a thoughtful and, I think, reasonable plan for your consideration. So as a firefighter and one that represents firefighters, I would urge your favorable consideration and your adoption of this ordinance so we can continue to do what Omaha firefighters do best and keep everybody safe. So I appreciate your time, and I'm also available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie Johnson, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, the Johnson and Question Foundation. In the Navy, we...
Mr. Johnson, can you have me get your address this time? I didn't catch you the first couple of times.
Yes, sir. Mister Frederson, forty-four, no, forty-nine, twenty-eight, North Fifty-Second Street.
All right.
And I just wanted to share one more story because of the storms are coming up, but I just wanted to share with the firemen that I was out last night, because that's what I do, I'll be out all the time, that the Navy had nothing to do with that ambulance that was smoking and going down the street. They thought we had something to do with that ambulance. It was as smoking like it was a Dickens or something was going on. But Andrew Young, when he created and put us together, Ambassador of United Nations, he kept asking me, "Donnie, why do you keep asking about the space program?" I said, "Well, you know, sometimes we gotta keep up with the firemen because they think they know more than the Navy, but I do think they should pass this because I had nothing to do with that fire truck that was smoking. I think the engine went out because of the heat yesterday." But in the Navy in nineteen seventy-one, I think it was, us firemen and Navy guys, we did some strange stuff, but we always had great equipment. So I hope you guys helped them out in that area. Tell me, the Navy had nothing to do with that ambulance that was smoking, going up and down Dodge Street, smoking to rescue someone, but it was smoking. I can't figure that out.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Chief, I appreciate your work from, with the Public Safety Committee that we've had conversation in the past on the steps you were taking to try to get to where we're at today with McQueen. So I know by driving up, Station Thirty-Four is right up from my house on Forty-Eighth and Mayberry, and Captain Towey's stationed up there, and I drove by Sunday, and they had, I think it was Sunday, they had mechanics working on one of the trucks there. So this is gonna be a great shot in the arm, and speaking to Captain Towey, and as you mentioned in your remarks, Chief, Local Three Eighty-Five and Trevor would concur with that in our conversations, that it's good for the morale and the public safety of our men and women, the firefighters in Omaha here. So I appreciate your diligence working on this, and I think it's gonna make a good difference. And I understand that there's gonna be another med unit that we discussed, it'll be going into service coming up here in the next few weeks. Much needed in several of our districts here for the safety and well-being of the citizens that are, it's growing every day what your men and women, the Fire Department, cover. So thanks for your work on it, Trevor. Thanks for your service to your members. It's a thankless job, but it's days like this where you know you're making progress on behalf of the people that keep us safe, so thanks to both you and everybody in your staffs and your members. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the cameras are not here, but they should be because we sit here today talking about something just as important, if not more important, than things we see daily on our agenda, which is new equipment for public safety, especially the Omaha Fire Department. And what you hear sometimes is, "We're not transparent," or "There hasn't been enough discussion," and what I want people to hear is, "We've been talking about this new equipment for a long, long time." And there's always a process to get to this. It's the process of the mayor's support. Of course, Mr. Curtis always has the checkbook to be able to pay for this. Public Works, obviously, Local Three Eighty-Five, we want to make sure the men and women of the Omaha Fire Department are on board, but nobody's against new equipment. We know how many runs that the firefighters currently make in this city, and the numbers have gone up and up and up, and so have the prices of equipment. So we've had long discussions in public safety, all the way back from when we first started talking about leasing vehicles, to now we're here for purchasing this equipment. It's been a long road, and the chief has seen it through, and I think people need to hear that, that we didn't just see this on our agenda as first reading last week and all of a sudden decided we needed some equipment. We have been talking about this for a very, very long time, and there is that process to get to this point. So I just wanted to give thanks where it was due. I was gonna ask Mr. Curtis on how we're gonna pay for this, but we'll get to that. Well, you know what? Finance Director.
Steve Curtis.
Mr. Finance? Mr. Curtis, quite a bit of money going to this equipment that's desperately needed. Tell us how we're looking to pay for this new equipment that's needed.
It'll be five million from city capital improvement, four million from the CIP from 2023, and two million from the CIP of 2024. And if you wonder, how do we commit those future dollars? It's because, in most cases, these won't even be delivered till '23 and '24.
Thank you. So when you hear about the process of paying for this equipment, it shows you how much work and effort goes into it. And keep in mind, too, when you have a streamline of vehicles, hopefully from a manufacturer who will set up their place of business inside the city limits, which will help with the cost of these vehicles, and not only that, help with employment, hopefully, higher and local, it helps the city out tremendously from the cost standpoint. So I just wanted to mainly say that this has been a long road to get to where we are, along with the new fire station. The chief is also seeing through the fact that we're gonna make a large equipment on purchase for the Fire Department, which is desperately needed. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Chief Olson, please. If you can come back up to the mic, please. Just to illustrate for purposes of young kids and to our community as a whole, the role of technology in this new equipment, can you kind of give us a summary of what we can expect out of a community in terms of what benefits technology play in safety? And I also want to provide some illustration on advocating the possibility of new jobs in that field of technology to our youth and young adults coming into the future.
Well, I can speak to jobs within the Fire Department. I don't know if I can speak to jobs in the technology world. Maybe the McQueen reps could speak to maybe employment within their own industry, but in terms of technology, yeah, we've come a long way from my days as a young firefighter on the street in the early nineties to where we're at today. I think it's most important to focus on, within the technology realm, that we do do a very diligent job of trying to build a spec for our fire apparatus that's very user-friendly. Okay? So we are always on the quest to try to make our specs as efficient as absolutely possible, and part of that is maneuvering and then trying to identify the technology that we think that we want to have on our apparatus and some of the technologies that we want to stay away from. For example, you know, we work in a climate in Omaha where we have to deal with severe weather conditions, freezing being one concern, and so we and our team most recently went back to the basics in terms of the type of fire panels that we like to see on our fire trucks, where we have to pull certain levers and visualize certain gauges for pressures and things like that. And we're getting away from some of those technology pieces that are advanced so that we can go back to the basics and be rest assured that in a very sub-zero environment where we're working in a multiple alarm fire, that that equipment's going to function and function properly. So we're very careful about identifying the types of equipment that we want to have advanced technology in, and in some cases, staying close to old-school methods, if you will. I will speak very briefly to emissions. So as we move through time, we're putting fire apparatus on the street that have enhanced and advanced emission control systems on them, for example. So they're burning much, much cleaner than they did years ago. That also creates efficiencies in fuel economy and things like that. So those are all things that we're very mindful of when we spec out our rigs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
Then, Mr. McQueen, I mean, the McQueen group, if you guys could come up and talk about the various job opportunities for young folks coming up in the future with the technology that is being played in this industry in terms of fire?
Yes, ma'am. Todd Klein with McQueen Emergency. The continuing advancement...
Just your address, too, please.
Fifty-three, sixty, Alvo Road.
Thanks.
With the continuing advancements in the fire industry and just the growing nature of it, right? You guys mentioned how the city keeps expanding in the outskirts, so that one thing that is imperative is aerial apparatus devices, right? So on some of these... So on some of these equipment that the chief selected, it is the longest aerial apparatus as far as aerial device is concerned on a single axle. So the technology that is incorporated within that to get that device just to function, and function not only from a technical standpoint, but to have the backups of the old-school methodology from a hydraulic standpoint, gives a lot of opportunity to young people from our training standpoint to put them through the classes that Pierce offers, classes that, and training that McQueen Equipment would offer to give them a bright future in the direction that the industry is moving in.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Dale Trettle, McQueen Emergency, 5360 Alvo Road. I'd just like to say, you had asked about the building and whatnot, what we plan on presenting forward. We have a $3 million budget for the city of Omaha for purchasing of a building and a location. We are also looking at adding a dozen jobs within the community, looking strategically with the city of Omaha. We will also purchase $250,000 worth of equipment, purchase locally to outfit our building, and we continue to be excited about the partnership with the city of Omaha.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Chief Olson, you know, I just want to say, if you could come up, it's the pricing, what, a lot of times, people just see the big price tag-
Sure.
And think, you know, we're spending too much. I think the people passing the bonds that we passed last Tuesday, though, shows that most people understand how we finance capital improvements and long-term equipment. But what I note on here is we are able to fully replace basically the fleet every eight years. And because after about eight years, I mean, that, it's not that they're not usable. In fact, you sell or donate them to smaller communities, but to serve the city of Omaha, they have about an eight-year life. Is that right?
That's correct. We can also utilize them as backup apparatus as well, so they'd be moved from our frontline fleet to our backup fleet.
Now, I know one thing that we talked about, too, though, if you don't do that, you often have fleets that then are getting, that need maintenance, and so they're out, and maybe we don't have backups. So having all of this new equipment, our call times, I remember when I first started about nine years ago, it was all about call times. And, you know, I always took that to heart because I truly do care about the people that we need to call. I mean, the fire that put the fire out, and if, you know, having a heart attack or we need an ambulance, you know, it is the good firefighters and EMS workers that are right there. And so I've always been very supportive of the fire department, and I've always wanted to see those call times reduced. And sometimes it's out of your control because of rigs being out of service. And tell me how this will help that and change what we have now.
Well, the biggest piece of this is standardizing the fleet. So if you can understand, all firefighters are going to work on the same type of apparatus wherever they go in the city. So they're going to understand, like I said, the nuances and the safety features and all of those things that we need to know to be able to operate our apparatus in a safe manner. When I spoke earlier to out-of-service someone, I spoke to when a vehicle's off the front line and in for repairs. We will replace that vehicle with a backup rig. So we don't go without a fire apparatus being in that fire station ready to deploy, but the level of that quality of that type of apparatus varies in our current fleet. What we're attempting to do now is to provide that layer of standardization for our firefighters. So no matter where you go, whether you're working in overtime situation, if you're promoted and moved to a new fire truck assignment, if you transfer, willingly transfer to a new assignment, you're always going to be working on the same apparatus, no matter where you're at in the fleet. And I think it's pretty common sense to understand that that's going to provide a great benefit. I think Councilman Begley might have mentioned morale, it's going to be a huge morale booster for firefighters. And let's face it, I've talked about this many, many times with you all before. When we have motivated firefighters, which is always our goal, we have safe and well firefighters. And when we have safe and well firefighters, that pays a dividend to the people that we serve in our community in terms of our level of service delivery. There's no doubt about it. When we're happy coming to work, we feel safe, we feel supported, you know, we're going to raise that bar. We always strive to do the absolute best we can, and our firefighters and our citizens deserve this today. We're taking a fleet that's adequate and does a good job today, and we're replacing it. We have the opportunity to replace this fleet with an outstanding fleet, and that's what our citizens deserve. And that's why we ask for your support.
Well, and again, it makes it easier to support, too, because when you look at the financing of this, it's a 0% through 2029. So, I mean, we're kind of locking in pricing now that won't rise above-
Correct. So to clarify that, it's 0% over whatever the consortium price is-
Right.
At that point in time. But, you know, understand, the way I understand it, we receive nearly a 7% discount just simply purchasing through the NASBO purchase system. So we're receiving a discount right off the top, and then we'll continue to receive that 0% increase, which is a pledge that McQueen has made to us through the duration of the contract.
Well, it sounds like we have a great partnership. This is, to me, when you look at the pricing and then having McQueen join Omaha, so I want to thank you all for coming to Omaha and building. I do think this is going to be a great partnership. It'll help us out. I mean, I think you'll enjoy being here in Omaha. We've got really good people, and so I look forward to that. But I think this is just a smart thing to do, and what I like is you aren't coming to us just saying, "Let's just buy five, let's just buy three, I'm just looking at the ones that are worst." You created a plan. So just like we did a master plan for all the firehouses-
Right.
And which ones need to be rebuilt, and then new ones that need to be built, following that master plan, you kind of created a master plan that can be fulfilled even moving forward to make sure that we always have the standardized equipment. And so that's what I like about this plan the most.
I appreciate that, and I challenge you to keep us on course because unfortunately I have to retire a few months down the road here. And I've tried to develop a plan that really is a pathway where there's really no other choice but to continue down this path because it makes sense. It makes fiscal sense, it makes good sense for our firefighters and our department and our ability to serve our community, which is, you know, always number one for us. But I do appreciate that. The goal is to standardize the fleet. It's been, you know, I'm just, I have 30 years in the fire service now with the Omaha Fire Department. And this concept was discussed in fire stations, you know, in 1993, when I was a young firefighter in my first assignment. So just carrying forward, you know, a lot of those, the goals that we've had for our department, and I truly do want to leave our department and our city in a better place.
Well, I think especially with this, you're leaving great legacy behind. So thank you, chief. Thanks for all the work on this. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. I have to thank my team. They did all the heavy lifting.
Thank you, thank you to the whole team.
And all of you for your support.
I mean, this is important, it's great, but it was well-thought-out, not just, here's some shiny new trucks that we can just purchase now, but how can we make sure that we're replacing the entire fleet every eight years when they need to be replaced?
You know, truly, this goes all the way to Mayor Stotter and her understanding that this is a priority and a need, and we've always had good relationship and strong council support. And a lot of the individuals sitting right behind you were very deep into the weeds on this, and for their assistance and their support, we appreciate them as well. So thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. I agree with those comments today, and I am also supportive of this item and will vote for it next week for all those same reasons. I had a couple more points where council members were starting to go just now that I just wanted to talk about, maybe insert at this point. And I totally agree about the morale comment the chief just made. A few of us were at lunch recently and happened to come across about 10 firefighters who we were just talking to of all different ranks, and number one on their mind was this vehicle purchase, and we talked about it, and it was really clear how important it was to them and how important that need is for their day-to-day work to keep Omaha citizens safe. And I'm pleased to note that out of all the equipment we're talking about here, there's pumpers and there's ladders, but there's also seven med units. And I think what folks oftentimes don't think about when they think about the fire department is that by far, over 80% of your runs, I think it is, are done by med units and ambulances, not necessarily fire trucks. So very important we keep that fleet up to date as well, especially during these times. One follow-up on the financial part of this, I think probably from Mr. Curtis. As Mr. Palermo was discussing, and I think is correct, the way we're able to accomplish this $11 million purchase is by amalgamating CIP bonds, public safety bonds, and the amount of $6 million that occur in the next few years, and have already been approved by voters. But then also the one-time cash infusion of a $5 million carryover. That is accurate, and that's how we're able to do this. But then to Ms. Melton's point where she was starting to go is, well, then what do you do after that to maintain this in future years, which is also an important question because I believe by doing this, the intention is we're moving away from purchasing fire equipment with bonds, using those public safety bonds for other purposes, and probably taking this on as a general fund item in future years. Mr. Curtis, I wanted to give you an opportunity to address that. I think that is the intention with this, correct?
Steve Curtis, City Finance, one of the things that we worked with, Jason Bradley who's here and others, we worked hard to figure out what is the real frontline equipment worth and what is the lifespan we ought to think about. And that's when we finally came to this, on average, eight years. And we decided we needed to approach this like we do the fire, or I'm sorry, the police vehicles, the cruisers, where we attempt to get those replaced about every five years because, on average, that's about the lifespan of those interceptors. So we sat down and kind of laid it out, Jason and others, I know Scott Gordon over at Fleet, Todd Thorshum who's here, they all worked on trying to figure out what that could look like. So what we landed on was, given the condition of our fleet currently in the hope that we could get a pretty good jumpstart on some new equipment, we came up with this idea of using '23 and '24 CIP since it's going to take that long to get these delivered anyway, and then using City Capital Improvement. And as you said, we were able to put $5 million in there from our current surplus, our 2021 surplus. And then going forward, starting in the '25 budget or '26, depending on where we are, we'll have to start figuring out and budgeting for the $4 million. And yes, you're correct, we decided that we'd probably wean ourselves off of the CIP, given this equipment does have a 15-year life, but we're probably not going to keep much of this 15 years anymore, so we're going to wean ourselves off of CIP. And just like the police cars, we'll have to be disciplined and budget for it every year, which we should be able to do with this amount of lead time.
Yes, thank you. And that's exactly my point in raising that issue, is that we're going to have to be disciplined on this come 2025 and beyond. We're making this purchase now for an infusion that we know we need, but that doesn't mean we can let up in future years, too. And by function of this becoming a general fund expenditure, sometimes there's lots of pressure on the general fund, up and down during different economic times and different revenue sources, in particular, sales tax that informs the general fund. But we'll need to make sure we stay committed to this in future years, too, to fully realize the program of work that the chief just described for us. Chief, thanks for being here. We'll have you back again before you do retire to talk about that a little more. But for now, I'll turn the floor over to Councilman Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. One quick question for the McQueen dynamic duo here. Did you say you're going to move to Omaha? Are you going to move within the city limits? Do you know where you're going to, are you still looking? And I know we had talked about that internally, that that's certainly important for my colleagues and I.
So we did meet with Chamber of Commerce, and they are helping us looking at some of your development zones, but we will be in the city of Omaha within your guidelines. We're working with the chief and, again, with Chamber of Commerce to find that exact location. So if any of you have any thoughts or help that we could use, we're definitely open, but we are definitely moving to the city of Omaha.
Great. That's, no further questions. I appreciate that. And one thing I would like to share with President Fesserson and Councilmember Melton mentioned, the importance of those med units. May 14, 2014, I was on 38th and Center at a friend's, we were taking out political signs from the day before, and I missed a call from my dad, and I called him back, and he answered, he goes, "Hey, what's up, Dad? I missed your call." And he said, "Well, you know, tough Irish guy, you know, I'm having chest pains." And he was 73 years old, and I go, "Well, where are you at?" He goes, "I'm on the porch." I said, "Sit tight." I hung the phone up, called 911. I drove from 38th and Center to 3432 Webster. When I got there, there were six firefighters on the porch. There was a rescue squad and a fire truck, and they were getting them off the porch. My dad wanted a walk, and chief, your firefighters at that time, they had it under control. They got him to St. Joe Hospital. He had a massive heart attack, they resuscitated him. He lived another six months, that's from being stubborn, but also from the care of local 385 firefighters in the rank and file in the fire department. So when I see these items, we discussed, Director Curtis did a good job of walking us through, what we have walked through, as Councilman Palermo said, up to this point. So when I see these things, besides going through all the diligence on the finance side, I think of Station 34 or the men and women that were in my dad's house that day, that gave him another six months of his life or eight months, that he would have been dead otherwise. So again, thanks for all the service that the men and women, the Omaha Fire Department, do in these purchases that we're playing now in the long game. We'll make it so when there's calls like somebody like my dad, that they'll be able to respond with good equipment and be able to save lives and protect lives as you do. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Mr. President, I, too, wanted to throw my support behind this ordinance. Public safety is important to all of us up here, and we appreciate your comments, chief. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Jason Bradley, who worked really hard on putting this package together, and he's in the room, and I just wanted to say thank you for your extra work. I know it's a tough job, but you did it, and I'm happy to support it. So thank you, Jason.
Thank you. No further lights, non-action items, please.
Non-action items, items 34 through 51 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 6 to 0, meeting is adjourned at 3:26.[1761.32]